Is he in there?
Yes.
Yes.
I haven't even seen him.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Village of Round Lake Beach Board Meeting for Monday, September 10th, 2018. It is now seven o'clock. I am trustee Butler. I will be mayor pro tem tonight as the mayor is out ill and under doctor's orders to stay home. Thank you. Now, I will call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Valdez?
Here.
Trustee Wallace?
Here.
Trustee Butler?
Here.
Trustee Nichols?
Here.
Trustee Cleveland? Mayor Hill?
Thank you. And now, would everyone please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Agenda is approved. And now, approval of the August 27th, 2018 council meeting minutes. Any questions from the board? Okay, do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that's approved. Now, moving on to our approval expenditures. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favors... Nope, I need a roll call on this, please. Clerk.
Trustee Butler?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Five, five zero. We have no ratifications tonight, so moving right along to our standing committee reports, trustee Wallace.
Thank you, Mayor Tem, pro tem.
Thank you.
I just want to remind everybody, as far as Swalco goes, that we have two electronics recycling places that we can go to that are full-time. One is our own, which is over on Sunset at the entrance to the sanitary district. And the other is on, just off of 83, on Berry, 585 Berry Avenue in Graves Lake. Both of those are open six days a week. And they do have a limit, I didn't even realize this, they do have a limit that says, please do not take any more than 10 items at any one time. I wasn't aware of that, but apparently it does. So, but it's nice that we still have this through the 2018 season. Hopefully, this will continue for us. Also, we still have a recycling program going in Round Lake Beach where the, where waste management is going around and putting the tags on the containers, letting people know what they should and shouldn't have in their recycling. I understand it's still going well. They're working across town. I believe they said they're doing it in three-week increments. I believe they're only about, I think it's only about six weeks old, so they're probably just coming into the third section. Hopefully, by the time they get through us and they find out, everybody finds out what they're supposed to be putting in their recycling, then the other communities can join that as well and start putting the right things in their recycling. Just a reminder, do not put soft plastic of any sort. No grocery bags, no the bags from your frozen vegetables, anything that is a stretchable plastic, stretchable type plastic. It gets all bunged up in the, in the processing wheels. And the more they get in there, then they have to stop it. They have to spend all that time cleaning it out, which costs them money. And it just, it helps if we don't put that sort of thing in there. So, everybody just keep on trying to do your best as far as recycling goes. And always recycle first, trash last.
Thank you. Do any other trustees have any reports for us tonight? No reports? Okay, so moving right along to the mayor's report. Our first item on the mayor's report is we are having an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if George could step on up here? We are... First of all, I need a motion to approve...
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are approved for George to be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Come on up here, and we're going to swear you in right now.
Can you please raise your right hand? Hi, George Steinberg. Do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commission according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And while he's signing the papers, just so everyone knows, Mr. George Steinberg has been a valued resident of our community for many years. He's been involved with us for many years, volunteered for many things, and we are very glad to have him on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, George. One more round of applause. Thank you. And the second item is the proclamation Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. Clerk, would you like to read this proclamation, please?
America will never forget the September tragedy that shook our nation's core 17 years ago. On a day that began like so many others, a clear blue sky was pierced by billowing black smoke as a wave of grief crashed over us. But in one of our darkest moments, we summoned strength and courage, and out of horrible devastation emerged the best of our humanity. On this solemn anniversary, we pause in remembrance, in reflection, and once again in unity. On September 11th, 2001, nearly 3,000 men, women, and children, friends and neighbors, sisters and brothers, mothers and fathers, sons and daughters were taken from us with a heartbreaking swiftness and cruelty. As we come together once more to mourn their loss, we also recall how the worst terrorist attack in our history brought out the true character of the American people. Courageous firefighters rushed into an inferno, brave rescue workers charged upstairs, and coworkers carried others to safety. Americans in distant cities and local towns united in common purpose, demonstrating the spirit of our nation. People drove across the country to volunteer, donors lined up to give blood, and organizations collected food and clothing. And in our neighbors', and in our nation's hour of need, millions of young Americans raised in a time of peace, volunteered to don the uniforms of our country's military and defend our values around the world. As we remember all those we lost on that day, and the Americans who made the ultimate sacrifice in the wars that followed, we must strive to carry forward their legacy. On this National Day of Service and Remembrance, we take up their unfinished work and pay tribute to their lives with service and charity. Through these acts and quiet gestures, we can honor their memory and reclaim our sense of togetherness. In the face of great terror, all Americans came together as one people, united not only in our grief, but also in our determination to stand with one another and support the country we love. Today and all days, we remember the patriots who endure in the hearts of our nation and their families, who have known the awful depths of loss. In their spirit, let us resolve to move forward together and rededicate ourselves to the ideals that define our union as we work to strengthen our communities and better our world. By a joint resolution approved December 18th, 2001, the Congress has designated September 11th of each year as Patriot Day. And by public law approved April 21st, 2009, the Congress has requested the observance of September 11th as an annually recognized National Day of Service and Remembrance. Now, therefore I, Richard H. Hill, Mayor of the Village of Round Lake Beach, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2018, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. I call upon all residents of the village to display the flag of the United States at half-staff on Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance in honor of the individuals who lost their lives on September 11th, 2001. Passed and approved this 10th day of September, 2018.
Thank you, clerk. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved and passed. Thank you. Do we have a clerk's report tonight? Thank you. Moving on to business. For tonight's meeting, we do not have any business at this time, so we will now open it right up to public participation. If anyone would like to come on up to the mic, state their name and address, and have a comment for this board, we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, board. Mayor Pro Tem, trustees, administration. Couple of things I do want to talk about tonight. Number one is, last week, I was privileged to sit in on the teen court that takes place right here in this room. And I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to sit in on that teen court. It is an amazing program, watching how seriously the kids take it. So I want to thank you for allowing them to do that here. The next thing I want to let you and the public know is that tomorrow night at the Civic Center is a property tax forum. Starts at 6:00, expected to run through 8:00. It talks about how to lower your property taxes, what you can do, and what your tax bill means. So, that's it. Thank you very much. Thanks, as always, doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments for the board? Okay, so, no more comments? We do have executive session tonight, so for probable pending litigation, land acquisition, executive session minutes, and personnel, at this time, I will need a motion to go into executive second.
So moved.
I have a motion from trustee Nichols. Second from trustee Valdez. And now, I need roll call. Could you call the roll clerk?
Trustee Wallace?
Aye.
Trustee Butler?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez? Trustee Nichols?
Okay, so we will be going into executive session. We will be returning. At that time, we will let you know if we have any action on executive session. Thank you.